You all good to go on the plane?
Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call a common council meeting to order if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Mary, if you could help us with roll call, please.
Doug Saloga.
Here.
Jim Barron.
Here.
Jackie Valde is absent tonight. Wayne Dean.
Here.
Matt Grimmer.
Here.
Phil Kason.
Here.
Tim Iker.
Here.
Kent Atwell.
Present.
Tom Hafner.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, City of Delafield's citizens' comments, who'd like to be first? Susie, your hand was first.
Thank you. Susie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. Several things I wanted to point out. First of all, maps are supposed to be north at the top, south at the bottom. This one's upside down, but for the art walk, we're really excited to see it's going to happen. This is well laid out, but please, let's turn it around. Second on my list is that I wanted to compliment that Music on the Hill by ID was fabulous success. I don't think we got to talk about that before, but the next one coming up, we're really looking forward to that. Next thing, police chief is going to talk tonight about the potential reduction in staff and services cut. And, oh my gosh, you guys, we cannot afford that. I've seen some really strange and scary things happening out here. I don't know if a lot of you get out. I ride my slingshot and I ride throughout three to four counties. And to even think about services being cut is scary. If some of you did not see the video on YouTube, it's 28 or 36 minutes about what happened in Wauwatosa this past Saturday night. I believe a couple of our officers and some from Brookfield and maybe other communities as well were called in. Some of those are professional protesters, but it can instantly flip in a second. My sister lives two blocks from what was going on, and I can tell you, people were terrorized. There were things going on that you didn't see on camera. We can't afford to have that happen here. I shudder to think if we did not have full force. We've had a lot of trouble with speeding lately. I've spoken to the police about Main Street and Milwaukee Street by our house. It's gotten better with the four-way stop, but even different things going on. A lot of people want to get out of the city, and we're getting people. I counted from five different states that have been here in the last month over the weekend. A lot of people are finding us very welcoming. They've also seen police officers and one couple that were from Iowa that came here just because they read nice things about us on the internet. We need to continue with that. We cannot cut services. I don't think with the police, DBW, I shudder to think what's going to happen in the wintertime if we don't. I mean, right now, if you see extra weeds, people think it's not a big deal. But if you see snow and you can't get through, we're going to be hurting. So I wanted to compliment Tom Hafner on the way he highlighted different budget options, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Personally, I'm for his budget. What he had is budget number one, the wheel tax. I've talked to a lot of people, and everyone has said, I've talked to people who are renting and who are homeowners. $30 per vehicle is not a big deal. It's not going to make or break our lives. If we have to do a tax levy of a smaller amount to go with it, it's a little bit more justifiable, and I don't think you're going to get a lot of pushback. What you will get pushback on, something that the police chief had said in laying off police officers and personally, as far as I'm concerned, cutting services, word does get around. A lot of buyers have been asking us as realtors, what's going on in Delafield? It's always been such a gorgeous bedroom community. There is concern if we lower our standards, because right now, we are considered a high standard. I don't ever want to see that where we're considered a lower standard. So let's keep doing the good things we are, and thank you, all of you, for serving.
Thank you for your comments. Who'd like to be next? Come on up, Mary.
Is there a preferred mic?
No.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Daniel, 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Delafield. I'd like to speak to the item on your agenda under new business, G, the preliminary 2021 budget, operating budget. The first page at the top, there's three columns. Debt service projection is up 5.25%. To me, that equals money going out. And the general fund projection is .75%. That I interpret as money coming in. The operating budget is what is on the agenda for this meeting, and the capital budget is part of that because we have to pay for capital products we have borrowed from. That's the debt service. How much do we still owe on the City Hall Library Building, the feast, the fire and police building? What do we have to start paying on for the Bark River restoration, St. John's Park, which is outstanding? What's left to pay on the Gulf Road Roundabout? Going down a couple of lines, I noticed that the city portion of the hotel tax collective for 2021 is capped. Excuse me, that's not in your information, is capped by Act 55 at $241,586.68. The preliminary budget number for the hotel tax is $352.87. I'm wondering where the difference will come from. Much farther down, the project rental revenue for the fish hatchery is the same as last year, $25,000. Seeing all the refunds on your voucher list for this meeting for the fish hatchery this evening, maybe that number should be reevaluated. A little insight, maybe? The Delafield History Center at Hawks Inn has had to cancel three of our four rentals for 2020. We don't do the business that the fish hatchery does, but we've lost all but one. I would like to request, as a taxpayer, that someone would answer my questions after this meeting. Citizens' comments are very one-sided, and I understand why, but they are questions. It's hard to know who's got the answers. The preliminary operating budget is a lot of numbers and time. Thank you all who have worked for it. Thank you.
Thank you much for your comments. Any other citizens' comments? Sure, come on up, sir.
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
Good. John Schall, 130 Stacks Drive. I came about a couple of things. First, some background on me. I've been a cop for about 25 years. My wife and I moved out here because it's a nice community.
Sir, not to interrupt you, but can you get closer to the mic so it picks you up?
Can I what?
Get closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I've been a cop for about 25 years, and my wife and I moved out here, yeah, maybe 12 years ago because it's a nice community. It's very upsetting to me that you're actually thinking about cutting positions on the police department. I wonder how many of you have ever gone on a ride-along with a Delafield cop? And if you haven't, shame on you for thinking about cutting positions. Go ride along some Friday night. If there's one guy or girl working, I'd love for you to see what that feels like. Something to think about, I think. I don't want, you know, even if there's two, maybe, but I think sometimes there's one. And I would urge you to not make some decisions about that before you actually think about doing that. And I've been, I'm lucky enough to work on the east side of Wonkie County where there's lots of cops if I need them. Out here, there's not. And, I mean, there's a lot of cops, but not in every little municipality. So I don't, I don't feel like we can afford to drop the numbers. I think the Delafield Police do a fantastic job, and I guess that's the main reason I came. By the way, Tom, I think you do a fantastic job, too. I've called you about a few things, and I always gotten a great response, so thank you.
Thank you.
But I urge you guys to think about what you're doing. And I can tell you, I live in a little neighborhood of 31 lots, 30 houses, and I'm sure that all of them think the same way I do. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens that would like to speak? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, we'll go on to item number two, the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Phil seconded it? Tim? All ready? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, item three, committee reports, licenses. No licenses, thank you. Okay, 3B, Planting Commission, Mr. Iker.
All right, we've got two things. Well, I kind of consider them housecleaning, but I'll explain what they are. They're both actions that the Plant Commission took on some lot issues. The first is certified survey map and special exception for a lake lot on Weber Court. The reason there's a special exception involved is because if we follow the code to a T, we end up... What we're doing is there's two lots existing, and the owner is dividing them in a way that is optimal for the usage of the property. But it actually, instead of having it like perfect to the code, which would include like a JAG in the lot line and some other odd things if you follow the letter of the code, it ends up making a lot more sense doing what they're doing. It's kind of the gist of it. If you looked at the map in the packet or the minutes from the Plant Commission meeting, some of that should be spelled out. Is there anything else that, you see any other subtleties to this, Tom, other than the fact?
Yeah, just to explain the special exception a little bit better. The city has an ordinance on the books that if you're creating a new lot on the lake, it's got to have 150 feet of lake frontage. And that lake frontage is, as defined in our code, not measured at the water line, at the ordinary high water line. It's measured at the setback line. And these two properties, both prior to the CSM and after the CSM, they've got 150 feet of frontage at the lake, but they're both just shy of 150 feet at the setback line. And so that's why the special exception is required.
It doesn't change density. There were two lots that will remain two lots.
Yeah, so if this was a single lot that was trying to subdivide, this wouldn't happen. They're just looking to make a sensible lot line change. And so anyways, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the certified survey map and special exception for 1475 Weber Court and 1525 Weather Court. And we can answer questions if you have any, if there's a second.
I'll second.
Great, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Great, rail's your approved.
Next one is a CSM and stormwater maintenance agreement for Del Sota. This is the Chick-fil-A and the associated property just to the east. This is formalizing the division between the two properties and the line in the parking lot, as well as a stormwater management agreement for both of the property owners. And, and so this was, this was not, this is not a surprise. This is all part of the plan going into this whole arrangement. So I'll make a motion to approve the CSM and stormwater maintenance agreement for Del Sota at 2980 Gulf Court.
Second.
Anything you need to add, Tom, to my...
Well, you summarized it perfectly.
All right.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
All right.
Anybody here for Chick-fil-A, you're approved?
Yep.
Thank you.
Other business for Plant Commission was covered last week in my absence, and next meeting's at the end of the month. And that's all I have for Plant Commission.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to 3C, Lake Welfare Committee. Phil?
The next meeting is in two weeks. Last meeting didn't have anything too noteworthy, other than you can take a look at the minutes. But in two weeks, we'll be having a meeting, and there'll be several things on there regarding boat slips, boat rental slips. And expect probably a larger turnout for citizens' comments.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, 3D, Park and Rec, Mr. Grimmer?
No meeting, no report. I'd refer you to the minutes of the last meeting.
Thank you. 3E, Public Works Committee, Mr. Barron?
I didn't attend the meeting, but there are minutes and a couple of things to note. One is that we had a request to eliminate the, no parking on Mill Street, and we conducted a survey, and we found all the people who supported the limitation of parking. So they not moved forward with that. And then there's notation regarding the county having to close Highway C. It's noted again in our agenda date. I don't think there's anything we have to do with that.
Yeah, the city does have to formally sign off on the detour route for their project. And so in your packet, you'll see the detour route just simply utilizes Highway 16 and Highway 83. The project is outside of the city's boundary to the north, so the detour route has minimal impact on the city. And so I would recommend the council approve the detour route as recommended by the Public Works Committee.
So I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. About when does that construction start? I read it, but I forgot.
It's in 2021.
2021, yeah, okay. Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
Tim?
I'll raise my hand.
Where did I leave off? Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay. 3F, Delahart, Iker.
We did have a meeting about two weeks ago, and one of the topics is similar to the three agenda items we have here, and it's dealing with the pending solar panel installation and agreements. And we have essentially the same agreements as the city. So aside from that, there's no new updates for Delahart.
Great, thank you very much. 3G, Police Commission, Mr. Saloga?
Yeah, no meeting, no report. There is a meeting next Wednesday night at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. All right, 3H, Library Board, Ms. Valde's not here. If they had a meeting, I would refer you to the minutes. 3I, Zoning Board of Appeals, Phil?
No meeting, no minutes.
There we go. Okay, 3J, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron?
The meeting is tomorrow morning. It was delayed because of the election.
Got it, thank you. 3K, Lake Country Fire and Rescue, no meeting that I'm aware of. If there are, I'd refer you to the minutes. The Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer?
We had a meeting on Thursday. Three or four items I want to make the council aware. We had our audit. We continue to retain $250,000 in a contingency or rainy day fund. We made sure with any possible merger that those funds would continue to be at the sole discretion of the three communities, Delafield, Sheneca, and Neshota, and not be able to be used by any new members. The second thing was, we had to, there was an omission in the 2020 budget. There was a paramedic refresher and costs associated with that paramedic refresher course that was omitted, which amounted to roughly $51,000. That was funded by the unassigned reserve funds within Lake Country Fire and Rescue budget that I believe will come to the council in future meetings to approve. The third thing was, we allocated an additional $25,000 from our unassigned fund to COVID-19 expenses. And lastly, we allocated $61,000 in unassigned fund balance to the city of Delafield. Basically, the overage was returned to the municipalities, and Delafield's amount was 78.8% or $61,233. Any questions or concerns?
Thanks for making sure that money stays with the taxpayers that put it in.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, one question. With the, the reserve fund that you're maintaining at about a quarter million dollars, you said staying within the three communities. Is that, is that just as things get settled with the new agreement with the other municipalities and they start contributing to round that off to any kind of new size?
Correct. While it is yet to be determined, the goal would be to have a reserve fund equal to our operating expenses, just like the city does of 2025%. And while the other communities, the non-original three communities, would potentially commit to that reserve, the existing communities would not because it's already there and ready for us to utilize.
Good to know. Thanks.
Great, thank you for the report. Okay, 3M, Tree Board, Mr. Grimmer?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. 3N, Deer Management Committee. There will be a meeting this Wednesday for the Deer Management Committee at 6 o'clock here in the council chambers, first one of the year. Okay, 4, Unfinished Business, seeing none. 5, Mayor's Report, no report. Okay, now we're into new business, and I'm going to move 6B up first. That's Delafield Chamber. Want to come on up?
Hi, Peggy Olson. I'm the president of the Delafield Chamber of Commerce. I'm also, we have a business, Digital Media Lab for beers, or agency up there.
And I'm sorry, we need your address, too. Address?
154 Pine Street. So I'm here representing the...
Yeah, it's just the process. We need your name and address.
154 Pine Street, the Conwalk.
Thank you.
Megan Brat, I'm the executive director for the Delafield Chamber of Commerce at 2216 Patrick Lane in Waukesha. We're here today, we had our art walks approved in January by the city, but given COVID, we are here asking for an exception to the county guidelines for mass gatherings for our event happening September 11th from 5 to 9. It's the traditional fall art walk that's been here many years. The event is what it's always been, with the exception that we normally have 50 to 60 artists. We've capped it at 30 to allow for social distancing between the artist booths. We're requiring artists to wear masks and have hand sanitizer at all of their booths. It is an outside event. And as a Chamber of Commerce, the income from this event is important. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the Peewaqui Chamber has closed their doors, and Heartland is very close within the next few months. So we're trying to stay ahead here, and this event's important.
So ask his approval to move forward with this event because it's important for the Chamber and our community, and it's outside, so...
Just a reminder to the council, they're here because they anticipate more than 150 people, the counting number. So they're looking for your feedback and/or approval to go ahead and proceed with the event or the policy we've been implementing for the last few months.
And the county order is, doesn't specify indoors versus outdoors, does it? Thank you.
No, I'll, I'll make the comment, I'm making the comment, that I think what you're doing is prudent. I'm almost, wish we had more space so you could have all 60 of your normal artists here. The one thing I think might be helpful to add for the public is just the notation that, thank you, it's provided that we do, and hopefully we do. Thank you to the city of Delafield for hosting us in excess of the county's guidelines. We're doing everything we can to make it safe and fun for everyone. I think alerting people to the fact and some of your public, you know, social media stuff, stuff or invites, that that is what you're doing, might, might be helpful for those that might be still reserved or, you know, overly cautious or appropriately cautious. It's just a recommendation, I don't think it's mandatory, but I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, we will be very transparent with safety, with, you know, conforming to the safety guidelines, but also letting people know, it's, you know, we've limited the artists. We have kind of rules in place for the artists. And again, it's so spaced out, and the businesses are usually open late, that there will for sure be more than probably 150 people in total, but it's spread out throughout the evening. It's not going to be one confined space.
Correct.
So.
I'm comfortable, I'll make the motion to approve the fall art walk for the Delafield Chamber of Commerce, given the updates that they have presented.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
I do want to make a comment, kind of carrying on that we have to, we don't want to have cameras showing big violations like you're seeing already at the universities. And I think, you know, we're really trying to have these events and make this money and take care of these businesses.
Yep.
But we have to ask all the participants to follow the rules. Because I, I mean, we're already seeing it just with the kids going back to college and they're going to wreck it. And we don't want to have that happen here. We want to have more of these because we may be facing this for the next year.
Right.
To Jim's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
So I just feel we need to be, ask everyone through signage or whatever to be cognizant.
Yes.
That they're going to have to follow the procedures. I kind of call it, you don't want a TV six moment. You know, that makes us look bad.
Sure.
So to Jim's point, were there to be any circumstances where you would suspend operations because the popular, there's just crowds?
No.
So there's 800 people there, and shoulder to shoulder?
Well, that's never happened. So that's never.
Yeah, neither has a global pandemic in 100 years. But my point is, I would be, I'm in favor of this, I'm going to vote for it, but I would be, to Jim's point, he raises a very good point. I would feel much more comfortable if there was a fail-safe that says if we see the volume of people such that we don't think it's safe anymore, that this is a Channel Six moment. I would feel comfortable if that, that that is in place, that that fail-safe could take place. Hey, we're going to shut down early. We think the crowds are obnoxious. This is way out of control. Let's be responsible and do the responsible. That's not a contingency based on this motion. I'm going to support it, but I would, I'm advising that be written or someone there that can execute that if that is the case.
I think we would probably look to the guidance of if it's getting on the hand, probably from the city police to shut it down. We can go through and ask the vendors to, like, pack up and leave, but it is an art walk, and that, some artists take an hour to an hour and a half to set up and take down. So crowd control, we wouldn't ask the Chamber of Commerce to have the manpower to.
No, but you could ask your vendors to put up their "we're done" signs.
We could do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, is there any other discussion? Good comments, by the way, thank you. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Looking forward to a great fall art walk.
Yeah.
Finally.
I'll just mention that the Halloween event was also on the agenda, but the chamber will be coming back next month to discuss that with you.
We really, we can't really make a decision until cities decide if they themselves are going to.
I think it's on our agenda.
It is.
Okay, we will go to 3A, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Proposed Ordinance to Add Subsection 50-4D3D to the Municipal Code of the City of Delafield Regarding Properties Meeting Certain Specified Criteria, Not Being Subject to the City's Mandatory Sewer Connection Requirements. Tom, can you help us out with that?
Yeah, this is something that we discussed at the council two meetings ago. We currently have a property owner looking to sell a property that is on septic. And by our code, the sale of that property would trigger the need for him to connect to sewer within one year of that transaction. This particular property, the lateral length would be over 1,000 feet long. The cost of the installation would be over $100,000, which is not really feasible, and it's not real cost-effective. And the property is over five acres in size. So what the council asked me to do last time is take a look and see if we can come up with a set of criteria that would kind of make sense for properties like this, but also minimize how many properties it would apply to. So we were able to do a query where we looked at the properties that currently have access to sanitary sewer but are not on sanitary sewer. And then we also looked at their size and acreage and how long of a lateral extension they would need, how far they are from any lake, river, or creek. And we came up with some proposed circumstances that in the current situation, these circumstances would only apply to the one property we're talking about right now. There, just the five-acre criteria itself, there's only three properties in the city that have access to sewer that that would apply to. So I think this is a very reasonable way to address the current situation, and I would entertain any questions you have on that.
Yeah, so I had a question. How do we know this only applies to residential zoning and wouldn't apply to A1 or other zoning districts? Maybe it's in the larger context of the code, but I just didn't see those kind of comments in what was provided.
I don't think you'll have, well, first of all, commercial development requires five acres to have a septic system, so they couldn't, so they couldn't go on a septic system for anything less. And the majority of our commercial is within reasonable reach of a sewer system.
Again, these are always hard, and you're always trying to think of the unintended consequences. And I just wouldn't want somebody to walk in with this code and want to put in something and say this applies, I don't have to hook, connect to the sewer.
Yeah, and right now, in the whole city, there's only three properties that have access to sewer, are not connected to sewer, and are larger than five acres. Those three properties are the one we're talking about tonight. There's a property just north of Fair Lakes Commons, also on the east side of Nagawicke Road, and then the Morris Farm on Campbell Trace.
So how would it apply to, would this create any latitude for a development that's on, it's an A1 right now that could be converted to RE2 and set it up in such a way where, you know, you wouldn't have to use septic?
If they weren't near a sewer and they wanted to make lots larger than five acres, they could have septic.
Lots would have to be at least five acres, and they couldn't be within 500 feet of a lake, a river, or a creek.
Well, in this code, if correctly, if I'm wrong, it states right in there that there is an existing private wastewater disposal system, right? So in the case of new development, they won't have a septic.
Have a private wastewater, oh, gotcha. All right, okay, that's good. I'd question the rationale if someone wanted to, how the spreadsheet would work for five-acre lots.
This is a lot, when you think about it, it's a flag lot that couldn't be created.
Oh, I know the lot, yeah.
And I think this is.
Tim, it's within the city's purview to require sewer extension of a new development.
So if somebody came in with a conditional use or something like that, we have other mechanisms over and above this sentence, this paragraph that we'd be adding here that would allow us the leverage to make sure we got hooked up to the sewer.
Just looking for an angle that.
Right.
Fight us, I don't see, so it's not there from the one I was thinking of, so I'm good.
How did you come up with the 500 lineal feet and the 300 lineal feet?
Probably unique to this property.
Well, the 500 feet, this property is just over 500 feet away from the lake. I think its nearest point is like 530 or 540 feet, so that factored into it. It's not science-based. It's, it was a stab at something that seemed reasonable. And again, the 300 feet, I thought that that was a number that almost all, there's no other properties that have access to sewer that are 300 feet or longer away from the sewer. This is the only one.
Are you talking about from the edge of the property line? Is that where that's measured?
The length, well, it's described as the length of the laterals. So that would be from wherever the sewer happens to be, or sometimes the sewers, usually the sewers in the middle of the road.
To the point of use in the house, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just.
Because I was just thinking along those lines, both of those numbers could be doubled. I was thinking about where the actual system would be placed on the lot, which would probably be 1,000 feet away because being a flag lot, I wasn't considering the driveway section. I suppose that does put it closer to the lake because that.
Right, so I measured the nearest point of the property, which is
Okay.
the stem of the flag at Nagawicke Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So just to be clear, Tom, you don't see any need to put in the word "existing residential properties"?
We could do that, if that's what the council wants to do.
Do you think it adds better clarity?
I think it does.
Existing residential properties that are at least five acres, so forth.
That's very reasonable.
I don't make a motion to approve ordinance to be named later that's presented tonight, provided that it's, the text has changed to say "existing residential properties" at the beginning of the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Great, thank you. We will move on to 6C, Discussion Possible Action Regarding the Solar Now Service Agreement Between the City of Delafield and We Energies to Host a Solar PV System on the City-Owned Property Located at 2018 North Cushing Park Road, Delafield, Wisconsin, DLC 0793-990002.
Yeah, the next three agenda items are all relating to the city's lease of property to We Energies for the installation of a solar system, solar PV system. This would be a 20-year lease. We Energies would be responsible for all costs involved with installation, operation, maintenance, and eventually removal at the end of the lease. No cost to the city whatsoever, and the city simply collects a lease payment. A little bit of good news with that. There is a component to the lease payment that is fixed over the course of the agreement and a component that is variable. And just within the last week or two, I was notified that there was a significant increase in that variable component, and that increased what the city's annual lease payment will be from about $4,000 to $5,000.
Great. Is there a motion?
So item number C is the solar service agreement for the arrangement.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, D?
Item number D applies to the same item, and this is the solar ground lease agreement between the city and We Energies. And all these documents have been reviewed and approved by the city attorney.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. E?
Item E is the Memorandum of Solar Ground Lease Agreement, which is the document that gets recorded to make sure that the title identifies that We Energies' right to use the property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Is that the last we'll ever see at the council for the near future, a solar item on the agenda?
I'll give you updates on how constructions go.
Okay. The motion, I think, was Tim, and the second was Jim, or Matt?
Matt.
The second was Matt. Okay, F, Presentation by Police Chief Eric Keel Regarding the Impact of the Potential Police Department Staffing Reduction, Possible Services to Cut, and Police Department Budget.
Good evening, and thanks once again for the time. After the last couple of council meetings, sitting through them, I wanted to address the budget issues and at least the perspective from the police department, mine as the chief of police and leading that organization. I think we can make a broader, I can make a broader argument that the police department is not alone in these issues, that staffing reductions at any of the city departments is going to affect the operations and the ability to provide services efficiently. However, I'm not as versed in the other department's budget and their operations, so I can only speak in any detail to the police department itself. Last year, I provided a memo outlining some of the effects losing one or two police officers would have on the department. I included that because I saw no sense in recreating the wheel. Those facts still remain. They're no different. The impact on staffing would affect every bar bit of our operations. It would force us to be more reactive and less proactive than we currently are. That, from a law enforcement perspective, is not a good thing. The more we can get out ahead of issues, the better. Our presence helps the community, and seeing us out there is a benefit to the community on all fronts. And having less people to provide that presence is going to have an impact. So there's only certain things that we could, we can cut. We can't say that we're not going to respond to complaints and crimes. We're not going to investigate them. We're not going to do those. That's our reason for existing. Over the years, we've done, and I've added some optional services that I think are important and are good for the community. Those are the things that we would have to look at eliminating and not doing in the future. That list I provided, that's not all encompassing. Those are the things I came up with and I sat down after the last meeting and said, okay, what are the things we could cut? None of them, once again, from my perspective, are ideal. Even things like vehicle lockouts, we don't do a lot of them. Usually when people call, it's important, and it's not just because, you know, we do get calls that, well, you know, I could call my spouse and they could bring the key from home, but it'd be easier just to have you do it, but that's rare. It does happen. So I thought it was reasonable to bring this list to the council. In fact, it's a tactic that's been recommended by the International Association to, you know, when the specter of losing funding rears its head, okay, elected officials, help me make that decision. You know, you represent the community. I'm just a hired professional. I can sit back and say, okay, we'll do X, Y, and Z, but somebody's going to be unhappy. So why don't I come and get the perspective of the elected officials, and you help me decide what things do we stop doing? So we can go through those individually if you want. You can start telling me now what we would have to cut, or we can move on to the next couple of points, which includes the budget comparisons, which I put together quickly. And there is one change in the personnel cost. There was a calculation that was wrong. It only affects the total personnel cost marginally. It was the percentage towards longevity payments for the union members. And that's a quarter percent per officer. That's contractual and I can't control. So looking at that, you know, from this year going into next year, the proposed increase is $17,000 for personnel. Of course, personnel is always the most expensive part of an organization's costs because that's the people that actually do the work. But that's also, when you look at the operating expenses, you know, it's, this year, it's 90% of our budget is personnel, 10% to do everything else. Next year, it'll be 8% to do everything else. And that's literally everything, putting gas in cars, so we can go out and drive and respond. There are, you know, I did put in the letter, and I got. There are, you know, I did put in the letter, and I got a call earlier today, and I was meaning to speak about it anyhow, you know, there are some operating costs we could still cut. It would total about $40,000, but that would be, include our entire training budget for next year. I mean, no training next year. That would be membership in the tactical team and the investigations unit. We would no longer have access to those resources. The $30,000 we borrowed to pay for the armored vehicle, that wouldn't be coming back, we just wouldn't have access to it unless we went through the county first. And that would hamper our investigations. The unit, we don't use it a lot, but when we do, we really need it. We're still a small department, we're probably one of the smallest departments in the county, and to handle some of the larger investigations ourselves, it's just, it's beyond our manpower, our staffing. So that would cause us more problems. The biggest portion of that extra approximately $40,000, I threw in our entire amount of money to buy supplies and maintain and fix our equipment. That includes the paper to write tickets. Tickets aren't written on a carbon form anymore, we print them off in the car, it takes a special heat paper from a printer. That would, if we got rid of that fund, we would have no money to write tickets, and we wouldn't be able to write tickets without being able to hand them out, which would pretty much make any traffic enforcement or municipal ordinance violations impossible. So there, yeah, sure, there's things, we could stop buying gas, you know, there's money that could theoretically be cut, but it's all going to have an impact. The reason I want to bring this forth again is because we're still having the discussion, and it includes laying people off, including potentially at least one officer. That's going to have an impact. It's going to. I understand that the economy is rough, and things are difficult. They're difficult for us too. We still have personal budgets as cops, we just don't live off of, you know, we don't spend all of our time here, we have lots of demands from the community that we have a hard time addressing now. I was off last week, but the week before, I actually got a phone call, a resident called me and said, I just saw two cars speeding past my house, where was the officer? Literally, that was the phone call. Okay, how do I, how do you explain that when that's the question? You know, yeah, it would be great if we happened to be right there, right then, doing that thing, not doing anything else. That'd been fantastic, but that's not the reality. The reality is, we're stretched then. The thought of losing some of our people is going to have a long-term impact, not just on operations, but on recruiting in the future. We are coming to the point where there's a number of people who can start thinking about retiring, and ideally, we would replace them. But if we don't get applicants, that's not going to happen. If you've seen in the news, this is not exactly a desirable profession for people to be getting in these days. It's hard enough, it has been for years, recruiting qualified applicants. This would hamper that even more. I guess the point what I'm getting to is, if the community decides that that's what they want, they want layoffs, then fine, they've made a choice and they deal with those repercussions. But allowing people to have that say, to me, is important because then we all know where we stand. Now, if the community says, nope, I don't want to pay anything more, and I don't care if that affects police operations, then we know, we scale back, I come back again, and we look at that list again, and we start highlighting what do we stop doing? That's what it would come down to. We can't sustain everything that's being done with less resources. It's just impossible, at least for me, and maybe I'm biased, but once again, I don't think the police department is peculiar in that. I imagine the same thing goes with DPW. One less DPW worker means longer time to plow the streets, takes longer time to do any number of the things that DPW does. The clerk's office, you know, one less clerk, it's going to take longer to do all the work that the clerks have to do. Once again, I don't spend all my day up there, but I check in on them every day to get the deposit to the bank, and it seems like they're working pretty hard now, I don't see a lot of just sitting around, and that would just compound that issue. So I guess where I'm getting at is, you know, there's a question of where the money is going, and I like to believe that we all understand that it's not being wasted, that it's being used as efficiently as we can. Yes, there's, it's expensive, it costs a lot to have a police department, but the benefit from that is having a police department that can actually do what it's expected to do. That being said, that's my pitch. Are there any questions, any comments, any?
Chief, first of all, thank you so much for your letter and for showing up. I think there's consensus in the city and on the council that you guys do a great job. Having said that, you know, these are difficult times and require, in this case, you know, decisions that can be considered very draconian and unfortunate. So with that, I did want to go over some of the items in your letter. You indicated in the letter $36,500, and you made a list, including vehicle lockouts, house checks.
That's a different thing.
Okay.
The list are services that we could cease doing. The money amount comes from those items that I described.
The training.
Training, our fun to repair and replace equipment, and the tactical team and the investigations.
Okay, thank you. That training, how often and what does that training include?
That training includes anything that comes up with new techniques, skill sets. It's especially used when we have a younger department, and we're still getting people up to speed because you learn in the academy, but you don't learn enough, there's not enough time. So we seek out additional training to get people more skilled so that they can function on their own without a lot of extra help.
When was the last time this training was performed, roughly? It's monthly, it's?
It's ongoing, that's to send officers to external vendors. Usually, other departments, we host periodically, will bring in some tactic, some sort of skill set, an expert that provides the training, and then we will send our officers to those.
Eric, does that include cutting range training?
Yes.
And how frequently is range training done?
We do that quarterly currently. We do two, well, four four-hour blocks, and two four-hour blocks of defense and arrest tactics, which is the hands-on, controlling people without deadly force.
Does that include special team training, like the suburban critical incident team?
Yes. It would be essentially all of our training. We could do something, we have to provide 24 hours of training.
Isn't that training police officers worse than losing a police officer?
That would be the argument I would make, yes. They're perishable skill sets, yes, we're doing certain things all the time, taking detailed photographs of evidence is not something everybody does all the time. You do that once, here, there. If you don't do it all the time, you need to be retrained, that needs to be refreshed. A new officer doesn't have the skill set at all to do that sort of thing, we have to send them to some training, or take somebody off the road that knows how to do that thing, and then have them train them, or that's what we would have to go to, which would then affect our ability to provide patrol.
So just to clarify, given two terrible choices, eliminating the training that you mentioned versus losing an officer?
I refuse to make that choice.
I don't blame you, okay.
That is, that is, that's loaded.
Yes, it is, but I mean, I need your, like I said, these are not easy decisions.
That's a decision that the council will have to make.
Sure.
And I will adjust accordingly.
I think it's a fair statement to say you cannot run a police department without training your officers.
I actually initially put that in there tongue-in-cheek, not thinking that that would actually be considered. I guess I was looking at how absurd, you know, I could have just as easily thrown in there the gas, you know, we could save, what, $25,000, $30,000, something like that for gas.
Also cannot have a police department without gas.
Right, you know, we could get rid of the cars, we couldn't replace cars, but then we don't need gas. Same thing, originally, I had put in with body cameras. Yes, we bought the cameras. We spend maybe $1,000 a year replacing ones that are broken, that malfunction, that's not the cost, the cost is maintaining that video footage, that's a personnel cost. That's something the lieutenant does who's sitting back here, and he spends some of his day making sure that those things are stored efficiently. We're lucky with body cameras. Most departments don't have a lieutenant in iron who can write the code for storage of those images. They have to pay a vendor to store those long-term in a secure location, and that is why departments are losing body cameras, because that is so expensive, it negates the benefit of having the cameras. I wouldn't want to get rid of the body cameras. They've helped us so much more than they, I even anticipate it. The number of complaints that I get that I can just go right to the body camera, play it while I'm on the phone with the person, and tell them, well, you know, we got a body camera, and it shows a little bit different from what you're talking to, are you sure this is exactly what you want to tell me happen? And usually, I get hung up on that at that time. You know, the civil liability for the city having them is awesome, you know, we could save money too, get rid of the squad cameras. They've already been purchased, but it takes money to maintain and manage those things. We wouldn't need the redaction software, there's $1,500, because we wouldn't, when somebody asks us for the video right now, Captain Hagan has to go in and take out the face and the words of anybody that's not involved in that incident. So if it happens at Walmart in the middle of the afternoon, he has to go through and block out everybody else in that image that isn't part of the incident. That would save us a ton of time too. I don't think it's a good idea, but it would, it would save some money.
I'll comment that, I appreciate you going through this exercise, and it's, you've done it every year, not to this detail, just as a function of the budget since I've been here, just to demonstrate where the money is going, you know, why this increase is in place, or why an extra officer was required based, I mean, we did a pretty extensive study that we got done as a part of a program from, I forget which university.
Oshkosh.
Oshkosh, put that together, and that, you didn't ask for officers at the extent that they actually said was appropriate based on the studies of like communities, but it did help rationalize when we restored positions that had been left open over the years prior. But, you know, there's been advocates of different department heads going to a zero base budgeting year, okay, let's just pretend like we're starting this from scratch, and that's very tedious, and essentially, you did it in reverse, you were challenged to say, if we didn't have this much money, what would you have to do? And it's really, the point is, it's not necessarily because of a single incident, it's not COVID, it's not because of a hotel room tax, it's not because of the state levy limits, it's really the combination of all the different things we're faced with, and restrictions, what we can and can't do, and what levers are available for the council to pull without going to the taxpayers and saying, here's where we're at, we've kind of gotten to the end of the line, we have to make decisions, here's what they amount to, and we don't want to go to them with a vague list of cuts are going to happen, and just have it be kind of conjecture. We need to spell it out in a very black and white fashion of, you know, what's on the line, and, you know, I agree with you, I think it's prudent to let our neighbors make those decisions about whether it's rationalized or not, and it's a minus, you know, if we didn't have a couple of those restrictions in place with state laws and other things where we could pool money from other areas, we wouldn't be here. We'd say, okay, this is all great, we'll take the heat from our neighbors if we had to raise taxes 4% last year and 5% next year, but we couldn't do either of those things without talking, you know, without, so it's a, maybe it's an intended consequence of state law, but we're here where we are, and I appreciate the exercise that you did and all the other department heads to lay this out in such a blunt fashion, because I've been accused already of having this be a veiled threat, like, oh, no, we're going to have to lose a cop, or we're going to have to lose DPW worker, we're going to have to lose an office person, and a couple of these people are people that actually took the time to look through the budget and explain why certain cuts couldn't be made last year, and they still say, yeah, there's one to cut. Well, this is what we cut. So, I know it's painful, it's the opposite of what we want to do, and that's, thank you for a job well done, and thank and reward all the officers that do what they do, and all the other city employees, when they do do a good job, which is most of the time. So, thanks for putting this together, this helps us go and make the case and lay things out for people, for the community to decide how we want to go into the next decade, so. I appreciate it, I know it's painful, I'm sure it's not rewarding right now, we'll see how it turns out.
Well, I'm certainly familiar with zero base budgeting, and I don't want to go through that exercise, so this is, you know, going the opposite.
This is less fun.
Well, unless you go to the zero base and all of a sudden, it's like, holy cow, it costs that much?
Oh, yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Oh, I understand, yeah.
And you realize that this is just never going to happen, so. This is just, I need to say it, I need to say it for our members. You got good people here, are we all perfect? Absolutely not, we're just human beings, but I believe in our members, and I went back and forth about, am I even going to come and say anything, because I do, I've come here and said this repeatedly on a yearly basis, nothing has changed, but then I decided ultimately to come here because they deserve the best from me, the way I expect the best from them. And that's the way I've always seen this job, is, you know, you're my employers, I put a lot into this. My wife would tell me I put too much into this, answering emails when I'm on vacation, and answering phone calls when I'm on vacation, but that's all I know, that I can blame my old man for. So I, you know, I believe strongly in this department, I've put a lot of myself into it. I want it to be a good service, I don't want to have to tell people, well, you know, sorry, we're just not going to do that, any more than I have to now.
Couple more questions, and I don't want anyone to think that I'm taking advantage, you and I spoke before this, and I raised these questions with you and let you know that we were going to, I was going to ask them here as well. And I think it's good information, like Tim said, if folks take a look at this budget, there's some things that they're going to want to know, and you've got good answers to this stuff. So can you explain the decrease in citations for 2020 and the anticipated decrease in citations for 2021?
Well.
Why that's a lower number from 16,000 to eight-ish?
This year, it's directly related to the pandemic. When the original safer at-home order came out, people stayed at home, there was less traffic, therefore, there was less enforcement that could be done. On top of that, two other factors, court was delayed, it was postponed for two months, so it's still working through the process of adjudication to determine if people are going to be paying fines or not. The third one is directly related to me, as the chief, I am concerned for the people that work for me. Some of our neighbors went so far as to put on their Facebook pages they were not going to be enforcing traffic merely to protect the officers. I didn't take that extreme, I told our officers that if it's a serious violation, I expect you to enforce it, to make contact, pull a car over, and do what you have to do. The rest of it, if it's minor, it was up to their discretion. If they didn't want to pull over a car and take the risk of contracting, I was not going to look down on them for doing that. So, yes, this year, we're down. Next year, you know, it's all that crystal ball of, okay, is that going to pick up? Are we going to be faced with another shutdown of some sort? What exactly is going to happen? You know, we can look at tickets as a revenue source, or we can. Um, you know, we can look at tickets as a revenue source, or we can look at it as an opportunity to educate. I prefer to look at it as educate. And we could, you know, I wouldn't do it, but if you direct me to, I don't think it'd be unlawful to say that, no more warnings, just write tickets.
No more warnings, just write ticket.
We would, we would raise more revenue. Now, even that has to be qualified, that in your average ninety-eight-dollar, ninety-cent ticket, which is your speeding ticket, uh, the city only gets thirty dollars of that. Everything else goes somewhere else. So, you know, we can write thirty-dollar tickets till we're blue in the face. I don't think that's really going to make that much of a difference. And I don't agree with that as a theory of law enforcement. We're there to educate and to correct behavior, not just to raise money. There's departments that do that, and it, it usually doesn't end well.
But that's not to say you never write speeding tickets. Obviously, if somebody's being obnoxious, that's right.
That's discretion. It's up to each officer what their qualifications are, what they'll stop. You know, for me, it's, you hit ten over, you start, you know, I'm probably thinking about pulling you over, but I'm not going to write you a ticket, but at fifteen over, I'm writing you a ticket. At least I was. Now, once again, to save money, I don't even have a printer in my car. I probably shouldn't be saying that in the public. So I can't write a ticket, because we would have to buy that printer and the paper for it. So, uh, I give a lot of warnings, because that's what I can do.
Eric, Matt, I just want to clarify real quick. So, court penalties and costs is the budget item that's down significantly this year. PD citations are actually up this year. The budget for PD citations for the year is eight thousand dollars, and through August tenth, we had, we have thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And conversely, court penalties and costs, um, the budget is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and through August tenth, we've only had twenty-three thousand dollars come in.
And that relates to, so, when I started here, your average retail theft was a local kid who stole some sunglasses at Kohl's. That doesn't happen anymore. It's people that we have to find because we weren't right there when it happened, and they jumped in their car, got on the interstate, and drove away. So it's a lot more legwork, and those are the cases that we don't handle municipally. They go to circuit court, because that's somebody who's done it before. They know what to do to try to get away. And those cases aren't handled through our court. Very few retail thefts, for instance, anymore are handled municipally. They're all going to circuit court, and the city doesn't see a dime out of it.
But, I mean, to that, to the same point, Eric, um, in recent years, that line item has accumulated somewhere in the hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar range, and through, through August, we're only at twenty-three, and so I think that's more of the COVID-related stuff and the court shutdown and...
Well, and the traffic, we're still processing tickets from last year at the beginning of this year. So that, those, so violation in October wouldn't show up in last year's revenue for a citation. It would show up this year.
Okay.
Uh, there's always a delay, because you got to give people time to appear in court. Uh, they get their opportunity to contest it or not. Uh, most people try to do a negotiation with the city attorney, and that goes back and forth for sometimes months before it's resolved.
And I'm referencing the budgeted 2021 amount for citations at eight thousand versus what you said, versus the sixteen thousand existing today.
Yeah, so the 2020 budget was eight thousand, but we're projecting it to come in at twenty thousand.
Then I'm looking at the wrong line. I'm looking at one hundred, two hundred, four, five, one, three, zero, triple six.
Yeah, so you got to look at the right columns, too, Matt. If you look, the 2020 budget column says eight thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And the sixteen thousand dollar number, that's 2020 estimated total. So that's our projected year-end.
Okay. Thank you. I see where you're talking. The last question I have is about overtime, um, and again, you and I talked earlier. We've had fairly consistent overtime, even though we've hired two additional officers in twenty, uh, or hired additional officers in 2017. Can you explain the consistency of overtime even with additional new hires?
Yeah, uh, more people, more activity, which sometimes results in more overtime. If you have, uh, some go-getters, and they pick up a drunk driver at two in the morning, and it's more involved than just, you know, your first offense, drunk driving, uh, that can easily run into the next morning, easily. Uh, if it's a lockup, somebody asked to go to jail, they have to be seen the next day. That's record-keeping, report-writing that has to be done, so that that report can go to the DA's office for an answer, for a decision that morning. We can, I control overtime as much as I can. There is no extra, uh, really the only place where people can find their own overtime is boat patrol. Uh, putting a boat on the lake, we open up shifts, people sign up for them, we let them go. That, they have some control in. The rest of it, we monitor very closely between Lieutenant, Captain, and I, um, and we do not, uh, we're not wasting money on that. Uh, if it's necessary, it's necessary, we pay it, because that's the right thing to do. If we can limit it, we limit it, because that's also the right thing to do.
And I'm not sure the current rules, but the DNR reimburses some of that overtime, right?
Right, but it's still, we don't, so the expense on the boat is that year, we get reimbursed the following year, and that's always a discussion between Tom and I with, well, how, what can we expect to have in there? And it's, it's another one that it's impossible to say. There's too many variables. Uh, we have to meet the criteria for reimbursement. Uh, it depends how much money is actually in that fund at the state, which I have no access to, and it depends how many other departments meet the criteria for reimbursement. Uh, my understanding is there's an agency in Waukesha County didn't meet criteria for reimbursement, so this year there was more money in the pot. So we got a bigger share of it. Um, that might not be the case next year. I can't control what the other departments are doing, whether they meet the criteria that a DNR puts out there. I don't control how much money is in that fund that I don't even know about. You know, I know it exists, but I have no idea or knowledge of where to look to find out what that is. It's quite frankly, I'm busy enough managing our department and making things work here. That's just an extra, hey, we got extra, more than we expected this year, that's wonderful. Uh, but it's not something I can plan on, or I'd be willing to plan on. To me, there's too big a risk.
In general, from the DNR, we get about, about twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year, um, reimbursement towards boat patrol.
And right now, it's, it's more because of the purchase of the boat. That's part of what's being reimbursed, is the patrol boat that was purchased a couple of years ago, that's still part of the reimbursement that we apply for. When that's finally paid off by the DNR's reimbursement, it'll drop down to, um, whatever we can manage after that.
Chief, I'd like to just make a comment and then have a quest, a request of you. First of all, um, because of a budgeting issue with the city, we have to go through this exercise of looking at all sorts of different options. Only in one of those options, um, I shouldn't say only, I hate to, I regret even saying that, but on one of those options is the discussion of cutting staff, and that just, the fact that that's even a discussion just raises stress for everybody, and I, I hope you can relay that to your staff, that this isn't a proposal at this time, is we, and that really is terrible, but, um, if you could just relay that, um, we really believe, I personally believe that the police department here is doing a great job. I personally believe the training is, is really critical, especially given the times. So my request of you is, if you could succinctly, as succinctly as possible, just, uh, give an overview of how many police officers there might be on, on a given shift, because I believe police presence is crucial, and I think you guys do a great job of doing that, maybe almost to your detriment, because I, I sometimes see three squads out there. If you could explain how that's all possible, how many we have on each staff.
We try to keep two sworn officers on the road at any time. That being said, with benefit time, with training, with, uh, people getting sick, injured, um, I don't have the exact numbers, uh, but a proportion of that, we have one person working, uh, especially overnight. There's times when we do have three. Sometimes when you three, see three squads, it's, it includes me or the captain or the lieutenant. Um, that's something you're not going to see on most departments. Uh, I still respond to calls, the captain does, when he's not injured. He had a knee surgery recently, so he's been kind of laid up in the office. Um, that, that doesn't happen everywhere else. I do it, because once again, it's the right thing to do. Uh, I think Bob does it for the same reason, uh, same thing with Landon as lieutenant. Are there times when there's three officers scheduled? Absolutely, absolutely. The way it works out with our rotations, yeah. It's a very small proportion of the times when the third isn't really for Bob or Landon.
Generally, two per shift, one overnight?
We try to keep, we try to keep two on at all times.
Okay.
But it, it, it all depends. Um, as far as overtime, there was a discussion I had recently with the, uh, there might be the perception that, oh, well, everybody on this shift took off, and now I'm paying somebody overtime to fill that shift, and that happened years and years ago. Uh, that was one of the first things I stopped when I became the chief, is each shift is independent, when it comes to that. Somebody from that shift is scheduled to work that day. Recently, the only time that I can think of that we did it this year was the one person who was scheduled to work a day shift called Insec. So I had to fill that shift somehow, and it ended up, we needed somebody to come in on overtime. That was the only way to do it. Um, I didn't see many other options, uh, but one time in a year, I think is pretty good when there's, you know...
Are there times when you have to call in, I don't know if it's the right word for it, pardon you, but, uh, have to call in additional backup or mutual aid, either the county sheriff or from Kewalk here?
Yeah, it's much less now than it used to be, um, but yeah, absolutely. Uh, and we go out to help our neighbors, too. Once again, there's, you know, hearing about the east side of Milwaukee, yeah, if you can call Milwaukee for backup and mutual aid, you're going to get about thirty guys that, that can't wait to go play in your jurisdiction and then leave. Um, here, we call for mutual aid, we might get one from Shenandoah, one from Hartland, uh, maybe two from Hartland, one or two from Sonoma, uh, a couple from the county. It all depends on the situation.
Thank you.
So I, I recall when we added the two, which was, one was just to restore a position that had been cut in the previous recession, and then another one, I know that you, I think, went into a, had a detective, which I think has increased the clearances and clearance rate.
It certainly had, so it's hard to say clearance rate right now, because that's an ongoing thing. It's helped with the complex investigations. We've had, uh, was it three? Three opioid overdose deaths this year. Uh, those are a homicide. Uh, the first time we did that, we assigned two officers, and because it was new to us, uh, it took two officers full-time six months to clear that. Uh, now it doesn't take that amount of resources, but we have somebody who can just do those things, and we're not losing two patrol officers that could be doing other things. So that's a...
So that was one item, and then the discussion about the overtime, I think you were filling shifts with overtime with the two less positions.
It, I've always...
Through sixteen, I think.
I've always tried to limit it, you know, when I first, once again, when I took over, it used to, you know, not speak badly about predecessors, but there was times when an entire shift could take vacation together, and it'd be backfilled on overtime, okay? It's true, it happened. Uh, that's something I wanted to stop, and that's why immediately, so, oh, each shift is independent. Not everybody from one shift would be off at any given time. Uh, we weren't going to bounce people around or backfill on overtime, that sort of thing. Uh, sometimes it's inevitable, you know? If somebody is, we have one person scheduled to work, and they're sick, somebody has to work that shift, and it's going to result in overtime. Uh, it's inevitable. You can't eliminate overtime enforcement. Something's going to happen that's going to require a body there, and that's going to cost. Sorry, if I kept on jumping over you.
No. I mean, those are the two points I recall, so I...
The hope was that it would eliminate, but what we've actually experienced is there's more initiated activity that then results in some...
In the extension.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, are there any other questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, six H, discussion, possible action regarding a resolution approving a referendum for allowing the city of Delphio to exceed the state-imposed property tax levy limit. Mr. Hafner.
Um, I think we want to do the budgets first, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, can we do the budgets first?
Did I skip on? Oh, I'm sorry. The discussion, possible action regarding the preliminary 2021 operating budget.
Probably be a good idea to discuss that. All right, so in your packets, um, there is four different budget scenarios. Um, budget number one, um, assumes no, uh, staffing cuts, uh, there's a two percent pay increase in there for employees. Um, a big thing that the council needs to, um, um, make a decision on is budget number one does include a wheel tax at thirty dollars, uh, per registration, and then, um, um, today, um, well, um, it would require a successful referendum, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred thousand dollars is what we'd be looking at for a referendum. I want to stress the numbers in the, um, documents I gave you, which is, and this one is ninety-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-two. Uh, that's the minimum required for a perfectly balanced budget. Uh, there's still a lot of unknowns with the numbers. Um, things are changing, uh, daily. Uh, we just actually got our, uh, library levy in today, and, um, it came in about a thousand dollars better than I estimated, so, uh, that's another positive factor. But right now, budget number one, at a minimum, we'd have to look at a, um, pursuing a referendum of around a hundred thousand dollars to supplement the wheel tax and balance our budget. Uh, budget number two, uh, is basically the same as budget number one, except for it takes away the wheel tax. If the council doesn't want to move forward with a wheel tax, uh, then this would be the, uh, option we'd have to pursue, uh, to maintain full staffing, and that requires a successful referendum of somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, when we get into budget number three and budget number four, uh, that's where we start contemplating, uh, either not going to referendum or having a failed referendum and having to cut positions to balance our budget. Uh, both of those budgets, three and four, um, contemplate, uh, cutting, uh, one police officer position, which saves about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the general fund, uh, one public works position, which saves about seventy-seven thousand dollars in the general fund, and one administrative position, which saves a little over thirty-one thousand dollars in the general fund. So after cutting those positions, budget three still assumes, um, a two percent pay increase, and the numbers, um, for budget number three and four changed slightly today based on a mistake that I had found in the numbers, and so I emailed the council earlier today, and then before the meeting, I passed out, um, this two-page handout. Uh, first page says budget three, revised date seventeen. Second page says budget four, revised date seventeen. And, um, from these numbers, you see that with budget three, um, if we cut those positions, uh, there's still about an eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollar budget deficit. And so what we do with budget number four is it's the same as budget three, except for we take the pay increase from two percent to zero percent, and when we do that, uh, we're at a point where we've actually got a surplus of about, almost twenty-seven thousand dollars, and when we kind of want to reverse engineer that pay increase, what that means is you could actually do about a one percent pay increase and have a balanced budget. So with that, I would suggest that the council tonight, uh, needs to have a discussion about the wheel tax and see if that's something that they are interested in pursuing. I know we had discussion about that at the last meeting, and there were some people in favor, some people opposed, and once we understand the wheel tax, we can talk about, uh, raises and what we want to try to accomplish, and then that would leave us with, um, identifying if we wanted to, um, go to a referendum and allow the people, uh, the citizens of the city to choose if they want services cut, uh, or if we just want to go ahead and do that without referendum. So with that, I would open up to the conversation by the council.
I would generally not support a wheel tax.
I would not support the wheel tax. I think it's another added tax that the citizens don't have a, a say in other than through their representative, and I'm not interested in adding a new tax.
I expressed the same at the last meeting.
I expressed the same at the last meeting.
Yeah, my concern with the wheel tax is it disproportionately affects residents versus businesses, right? Businesses technically usually don't have a lot of cars. So at least if you do the referendum on real estate tax, it's fair across the board.
Good point. And that's in the end where I stand too, because we run this whole operation and I know our retail area is a big component. It's a big component as to why we have police costs. So, I mean, if we make a decision here to go to referenda and fund positions, I prefer to have it just stay on the, on the, the property tax.
Does someone want to make a motion to not move forward with the wheel tax?
I'll make a motion to not move forward with the wheel tax.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Pass.
Just a point of clarification. Were we able to do that since the actual discussion about a wheel tax wasn't on the agenda?
It's part of the budget.
Okay, because it's part of the budget, we could?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just didn't want anybody coming back later.
So is the expectation then that we have to address, that we have to vote down, well, we can do whatever we want?
Well, you know, just in the, looking in the rearview mirror now on that budget, I mean, on the wheel tax discussion, it takes, it, we're taking it off the table, is my understanding. I mean, it's, so it's not like there's some hidden backup plan if a referendum doesn't pass where, oh, we'll get you here. You know, this is really laying out as plain and simple of a solution, I think, to the taxpayers as possible, is what our goal should be and not have any kind of convoluted or hidden agendas or anything like that as far as how we can get out of this if a, if a referendum doesn't pass. It's a simple, it's a simple yes or no on staffing levels and service levels, I think, is what would benefit the integrity of the vote, yes, no, on a referendum and also just the process itself. It's easier to explain. So we don't have five complicated scenarios. We hit, we're going to end up with essentially referendum passes and it's status quo and we've got hopefully the right benefits for the right people in the right places to do the, their jobs enthusiastically and the community is what we expect it to be. The others are, you know, saying, we want to change from what we've done in the past. And we've got two options to accommodate it that we have to figure out if the referendum fails. It's kind of how, what we're left with, right?
Right. I mean, if we-
And I think-
The referendum is moving forward with budget two, and if that fails, then you pick from three or four.
And-
But the cuts will be made one way or the other if the referendum fails.
And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, but I think there's, there's all sorts of flavors of three and four that would come into play, that we can play with the, with the, with the, what we think is necessary to have the proper compensation and that for the staff, given the cuts, to make things right and where the numbers are actually going to, going to settle down to. We're not talking plus or minus $80,000.
Correct.
It's going to come to, we're, we're looking at five and 10 and a couple of different variables that might settle out where we're just got a little bit of tweaking we can do in November, right?
That's correct.
So I, I'm trying, in my own head, that's the, how I frame this coming into this meeting is that I don't know how much time we can really spend on fine tuning options three and four to say where we'll end up if the taxpayers decide they don't want to support where we're at today.
I concur. I think it's, it's pretty much-
They look, they look close enough to me.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll let, I'll let the discussion go from there.
I did have one question for you, Tom. The, the big difference between three and four is basically the no pay increase. Is that correct?
Correct. That's the only difference.
And could you just summarize for me what percentage of the, I don't know if the best way to say it is, but the labor costs are contracted, as in like the police department through negotiations? And what's not? Because that's not something we can control quite as-
So the police officers are the only positions that are, that are union. So even in the police department, your, your chief, your captain, your lieutenant, those are not union and the two administrative positions are not union. So it's strictly the police officers and the detective.
Okay. Do you recall roughly what percentage of the staffing at the city is officers then?
I, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I'm only asking because it's a pay increase that's not as controllable by us.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But typically, just, just for a frame of reference, typically what's negotiated with the police is then applied everywhere else. Typically, not always, but typically.
We didn't do it last year.
Every, every year until last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think-
Go ahead, Doug.
Point of clarification, or at least from my own perspective, wheel tax, does that require a referendum? Or is that something the council can decide at budget?
The council can simply decide. I mean, some council, a council could do an advisory referendum on a wheel tax, but they have, the council has the authority to implement it on their own without seeking input from the taxpayers.
So in theory, and I'm not for the wheel tax, but if the referendum gets turned down on budget two, budget three or four potentially could have some concept of the wheel tax.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think we talked to-
We said no. I think it's, I thought, I took our vote to say that that's, we don't want to-
Yep.
We don't want to have that looming.
Fair enough.
I think we killed it.
I think it would be poor form to ask the people if they want their taxes increased. They say no, and then you increase their taxes in a different way.
Yeah.
So I just want to say, I think there is, it's a small, I think there's a, from looking over the budget, I just want to offer a budget five. I know we're, I know there's lots of budgets here, but I know all of our, our goal is to make it through this without, with the fewest number of job cuts we can, without raising taxes on businesses and individuals as best we can, and to still continue to provide our core services. So, looking over the budget, these, some of the cuts that I've put forward here are, I would acknowledge are draconian, but I think they're worthy of at least consideration and could get us to a place where instead of cutting three, if the referendum would fail, we would only have to cut two positions. I haven't vetted this entirely through Tom and the mayor, but I do want to just bring it up for the council's input. It would mean, as is becoming more and more typical, decreasing council salary by 30 to 50%, decreasing committee salary from, by 50%, reducing the 40 bucks per meeting down to 20, eliminating employee engagement, ending the league membership, if that is reasonable, ending all tuition reimbursement, suspending deer management for a year, and then suspending goose roundup, lake welfare, suspending lake welfare's mailing, suspending weed control on lake welfare for a year, and the bleaker steed attendant for a year. Eliminate the Waukesha County Center for Growth for $4,000, eliminate the communicator for $4,500. And then finally, utilize the 20,000 remaining in the fund balance and pass a 1% raise to non-union employees and a 0% raise to union employees.
Say that again on the raises.
0% for unionized employees and 1% for non-unionized employees. And I can go through these specifically and Tom, you can guide me on dollar amounts, but all that in some total comes up, comes up, meets the 247,000 and with just two layoffs, which would be DPW and clerk. I would, I readily acknowledge they're dracon, they are severe, but they are what they are.
I think that's out of the box thinking, so I, I thank you for that, Matt. I would also say there might be another option to look at, because those are all the services that are provided on a daily basis, on an annual basis. I realize operating and capital improvements are two different things, but if somebody can correct me, explain how I might be wrong, I'd appreciate that. But I think that there's another option to look at with capital improvements, if there's a, a way to reduce those at all or slow those at all, because when we spend $350,000 for a path on Nigawica Road, that is a, almost $40,000 a year expense, even though it's coming out of long, you know, the debt fund, that's still money we can't put towards the operating budget. So I'd like to consider exactly what you're talking about, Matt, with that, but also looking at the capital improvement expenses. But I, I think that's all secondary to asking for a referendum. That would be my opinion.
So Phil, just to clarify-
Thank you.
Reducing capital expenses and debt service doesn't improve our operating and levy limit quandary at all. It will lower people's taxes in the future, but it doesn't change our levy limit and how much we can levy for operating costs.
Okay, I can talk to you more individually about that too. Obviously, I need some education on that. That's, that's my understanding that-
Basically, the state limits operating levy-
Sure.
And doesn't limit capital levy whatsoever. You can borrow till-
But that's still got to come out of the, the funds that's collected from taxpayers ultimately.
I, I, I'm going to say, if we go to referenda, which I think we're going to have to, politically, I think it's going to be smart for us to consider that capital budget this year and make some, some delays in that too. And because you're going to say, okay, we need more money for operating, but from, for this next year or two, we're going to really pull in our capital spending so we can soften the levy impact in the years that these, this thing's going up. And I've sat here and, I've supported a lot of these capital things because I support long-term planning. But we've also talked about taking a relook at all that stuff. And that's not on the agenda tonight, but it's a political thing. And I, I think we will be well advised if we're going out for an operating referenda to try and get the controversies off the table on these split votes on projects. Get it down to where we all agree what projects we're going to do and it's unanimous. So, but that's another question, but that's, that's an effort to get support. So that's, that's, I'm trying to add on to your comments where I'm thinking.
So Phil, real quickly-
But that's, that's a November decision or an October decision to maybe look at that and say, look, we're really going to squeeze this thing because we're asking for your support on the lift, so.
Yeah, just real quickly to circle back to how capital affects the levy limit. If in one year, we have $1.8 million of debt service and the next year it goes up to $2 million of debt service, our levy limit goes up by $200,000. Whereas if our debt service goes from 1.8 million down to 1.6 million, our levy limit goes down by $200,000.
Thank you.
Yeah, Phil and I talked and that was, because I know it comes out of the operating budget.
Yeah, but what you're saying for the-
But the levy-
We're allowed to levy whatever we want for capital in, in effect.
I wasn't aware that, I wasn't aware that-
Thank you, Tom.
The fluctuations in the, in the actual levy limit formula accounted for the capital. I thought it just spread it out.
Because you have to get to the levy. It's just-
Of course. Okay.
Man, are you suggesting your option five if a referendum doesn't pass or in lieu of having a referendum?
In lieu of having a referendum. I, I look at the, the history of referendums in a conservative city, as Delphio is. We had a failed Kettle Moraine referendum before they had to bring it back again. The margins that had passed were slimmer than slim. I philosophically disagree. I understand how we got here. I understand that it has been conservative budgeting in, over the last 10 years that has gotten us here. I understand that, that it's unfortunate that there isn't any benefit to communities that, that are conservative with their budgets. But I generally oppose referendum to increase taxes philosophically because I think living in a republic, we're the representative, we're the representatives elected to make these decisions and, and that's just where I stand.
Well, I may be wrong on this, but asking permission to spend the money doesn't mean we spend the money. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
We're getting permission to, we're asking for the, a referendum would be asking people whether or not they will approve an expenditure to the amount that we're asked, that we're, that's in the referendum. If we elect to budget five and 99% of the people voted for the referendum, that's certainly within our power.
And that's a tool the legislature has given us.
Yes, at council's discretion.
But not, but not asking for approval of a referendum eliminates budget two. You know what I'm saying? A refer, a passage of a referendum leaves all, all four budgets in play. Not asking for referendum eliminates one of the four. Right?
No, I appreciate that. That's a reasonable point.
I think, I think it would be-
Have anybody figured out the numbers if we go to budget option number two at $250,000, what that comes out to on an average per person or business as far as?
As far as like on the mill rate?
What, total cost to-
For $100,000 in valuation.
So a dime on the mill rate would generate about $140,000.
That's 16 cents.
You guys talk amongst yourselves.
I'll go 16 and a half cents.
So, well, to your point, Tim, it's a reasonable point, but I guess, I guess I'm not in favor of then, even if I'm given the option.
So if the levy limit was $30,000 higher and it allowed us to keep a clerk, you'd still push for item five?
We're talking about like 18 cents.
Yeah. You know, you know, my point is, so like if, so you'd still, I don't know. I, I think it gives, it gives us a wider spectrum of options to discuss as opposed to, it's really, it's really what the legislation is, is meant to do. It's meant to take it out of our hands and put it in the, in the tax, in the, in the voter's hands, whether, whether we like that process or not. For any community that doesn't exhibit year-over-year growth beyond, you know, inflation or just what, what, yeah, just beyond inflation, you end up, inevitably end up in the same situation without, unless you decrease head count. You can't, you can't sustain unless you, unless you're-
Well, no, we're, we're forced because of mediation arbitration to bear additional costs for labor. And, you know, you know, we mirror it with our other employees, but I mean, that's, the lift here is all the labor costs. That's, that's legislation that impacts us too. The other thing is we're, we're not, you can solve your problem if your Oconomowoc can grow your way out of it, but our citizens don't want us carving up the fields. And Oconomowoc doesn't, they have a 7% lift this year.
Way to answer-
And they pay their cops the same two and a half-
Right.
More.
Way to answer your question. $250,000 on the levy would cost a taxpayer about $18 per $100,000 of value.
Thank you. No, I'm, I'm still leaning toward the budget number two, $250,000 going to referendum. And then if the citizens choose not to, then it's on to all these cuts.
Sorry, can't hear you, Wayne.
Okay, apologize. I said I'm for budget number-
Okay. Apologize. I said I'm for budget number two, is my feeling, in going on to referendum. And then if referendum fails, then the citizens have endorsed, basically, us to make these cuts.
I feel similarly, the, I would be interested in vetting all of the possibilities of the cuts. I think a couple of the ones that Matt mentioned might not be possible by law, right? I mean, we still have to, we still have to have a community newspaper?
No.
We do not?
No. Oh, no, he said the communicator.
The communicator.
Oh, the communicator, the news, our city news, okay, gotcha. Okay, that's, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, you do have to have a city newspaper.
And what about the league, the league membership? Is that anything associated with our, our legal fees for lawsuits coverage, or no?
So we have coverage through the league, and I would, I would have to see if we're still eligible for coverage without being a member.
So is a premium separate from membership?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So very likely we are. All right.
But I don't know if we'd still be eligible to participate as not being, with not being a member.
All right. Yeah, those are the only two that came to mind. So one of them, for sure, we could still do, and the other one, maybe. All right.
And didn't you have a $4,000 one in there, Matt, for a different group?
That's the new one with Tim Casey.
Right, but we didn't fund that.
Yeah, that's the inquiry that I had, the Waukesha County...
It's in the budget.
This year?
For 2021.
Oh, we did fund that?
For 2021.
Oh, 2021, okay.
I think that would...
What is that, $4,000 item?
Waukesha Community Development.
It's for economic development.
To try to help us find ways to grow out of our problem.
All right. So this was an action item. This was a discussion on the budget, right?
Well...
No, you need an action tonight, don't we?
No, but I mean, there's, there's different agenda items, right, for referendum versus budget?
Yeah, for the referendum, ultimately, we had to make the decision with the...
Yeah, we just, that, we have to decide that tonight, right? Because we've only got two days until the paperwork's due, or, I mean, it's an intimate, fast approaching timeline, correct?
Yeah, so the referendum is done by resolution, if you want to go that direction. And in your packet, there's two examples of resolutions that you could consider. And Kent is right. This is the last council meeting for us to make this decision, as we need to have the ballot language to the county by August 25th, in order to get on the November ballot.
I guess you attached two, two resolutions, and I think I know why, but could you explain it?
Yeah, one of them was assuming that we would use the wheel tax. One of them assumes we don't use the wheel tax.
Budget one versus budget two.
And I rounded to a full percentage on there, so if you... Just bear with me for a minute. Trying to make sure I get the right one. Yeah, so one of them was for 4%, and one of them was for 7%. And these were written before we adjusted the budget for that credit from the fire department. And so we got to find the percentage to use, if we want to go to a referendum, for about $250,000, and I can calculate that.
And then one other discussion item. Have we set aside that we're not going to grind fund balance at all anymore? Is that...
Actually, let me just go back to this. So the second resolution talks about 7%, and it talks about 300, almost $313,000. And when we're talking about $250,000, that's the amount that we need above and beyond what we're allowed to levy. That's how our budget works. When you get to this resolution, by statute, you don't have, you don't state how much you need above and beyond your levy limit. You state how much you need above and beyond last year's levy. So you got to include both the $250,000 that we need, plus the $50,000, $55,000 levy limit increase that we are allowed if we don't go to referendum. Does that make sense?
I guess...
So we really need about $305,000 above last year's levy, which is about $250,000 above our allowable levy for next year. And so if needing 305, 7% generates about, almost $313,000.
And with those numbers, Tom, just so I make sure I'm clear, and others are clear as well, that takes our reserves down to 20%?
It does not. It does not contemplate using any of our reserve fund balance. And our reserve fund balance at the end of 2020 is projected to be about $20,000 above our 20% goal. So very minimal amount there, but potentially, you could use that $20,000.
We're within $20,000 of what we understand to be the minimum reserve fund that we've, maybe you can recite the expert, the definition you cited with me just before the meeting. And certainly, we had Ellers come in here almost a year ago, going through how it would affect our bond rating and so forth. And my recollection of that conversation is that he said, don't go below. You start to run a higher risk of your bond rating if you drop below 20%.
Correct.
Right.
Because that was brought up at citizens' comments at the last meeting, about 25 was kind of arbitrary back in the day when they came up with it. How do we decide what that number is? And the 20% number is based on Ellers, and then Tom's statement, I believe, I forget who you said it was, but they said, don't go below 16%.
Yeah, the Government Finance Officers Association sets standards. They identify the factors municipalities should consider in establishing a fund balance goal. But as a bare minimum fund balance, they recommend two months of operational expenses. Two months out of 12 months would be about 16.7% for a minimum fund balance goal.
Well, I think if we made a decision to go under the two, it should be not to bury some problems in this one year. I think it's a decision you might take in three or four years, where you might say, okay, now our operations are fine-tuned enough that we can, we could let it go down a bit. But, so I guess, since we're at the two, then we have to maintain it. And we've taken $200,000 a year off of it in the last year or two.
Yeah, 2017, our fund balance is at 35%. We've been spending it down since then.
So it has to end.
And if any citizen thinks there's areas in the budget that, you know, can keep us from cutting one, or two, or three of these positions without passing a referendum, that there must be some areas in there, please send me an email with your review of the budget, where you'd like to see those items taken out.
Just for clarification, again, this is for five years, is that correct?
Correct.
So I guess there's two questions. Is, why is it five years? Is there, is there a technical or legal term, why we selected five? Or was it just the fact that we think at the end of five years, we will be out of the levy situation, and taxes could then drop potentially? Or what's some...
Yeah, so, I mean, the five years is something that Kent asked me to put into it. I would say that it is fair to say that we are hopeful, that we've got some significant developments that are in the pipeline that could bring us out of this. However, those developments could also not happen as well, and that is a risk. It's, it's not very typical for a municipality to propose a certain number of years, and then for the referent, for the levy exceedance to stop. Most municipalities find themselves in a position where they do one year, or do it on an ongoing basis permanently.
So the, the one referendum you've got, a resolution you've got proposed in here, or just as a sample, you're saying the numbers would be different, but it would still, we'd still be asking for 7% if we didn't, without the inclusion of a wheel tax?
Yeah, the 7% number was the, was for the option of without the wheel tax. If we were going to do the wheel tax, then we would do the 4% resolution.
Right. And so you said we'd need to adjust the number, but that's, we can just take those...
Actually, actually, we wouldn't adjust the numbers. Like I was saying before, the 7% would yield us $313,000, almost $313,000 over the 2020 levy. And that's how you have to state it in the resolution, statutorily. And the $250,000 that we were talking about with regards to our budget, that's the amount that we need above and beyond our 2020 levy, plus the increase in levy we are allowed without referendum from net new construction.
Gotcha. So, so there's no change in the wording of the resolution?
Correct.
Regardless, okay.
And that, that amount that we are allowed without referendum, that's stated right in the resolution, too. That's the 55,254. So...
Right.
So this, this resolution would allow us to collect the 312, which is roughly the 55,254, plus the $250,000 addition that we need.
So you're looking for two different motions. One to approve a preliminary budget, and then second, we'd move into approving a referendum, or you're putting them two, both together?
I think that would be an appropriate way to go forward.
I'd like to make the motion to approve preliminary budget number two.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who's seconding? Doug? Okay, discussion.
Could I just have a minute to review number two?
You looked at me funny, Tom, or was that just because of the mask I put? So, did I make it inappropriate motion? Did I make an inappropriate motion? You looked at me funny, I couldn't tell whether it was...
Nope.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong with that motion.
All right.
I mean, I, I'd say that for the, for the sake of the gymnastics we're dealing with right here, that makes a lot of sense to me, because it's the spirit of what that, what's enclosed, you know, what's, what's in budget two, and that's just, actually matches the referendum language. You're, you know, we're asking for a certain amount to be approved for the purposes of maintaining existing public service levels for police, fire, and rescue, and public works, and administrative services. And it's not to say that, that $247,000 is a final number. We could blend other items, which we do in any given year, that Matt proposed even, to take that number down below what the referendum would even allow us the latitude to do, if, if we so chose. Right? I mean, so I'm in agreement with the fact that I think budget two makes, I mean, so anyways, for the purposes of where we're at, I think...
That is a good question. Does this set the levy, or this just sets the limit that we could go to?
This, this allows us to go to that amount. Doesn't require us to...
The flip side is, if we sell this, that we're going to keep these positions, we're probably keeping those positions.
Yeah, I was going to bring up that...
It doesn't mean we can't take Matt's list.
Right, and cut it places.
And save some money.
That's always an option.
Sure.
Well, we've done it.
One more time, this sets the limit.
Correct. Okay. And we can always go less.
Okay, seeing no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Passes. Okay. Discussion possible, action regarding, let's see, let's read this first.
Now we're going to pass the referendum.
So are we actually going to do each?
Yes, we need to.
Okay, discussion possible, action regarding a resolution approving a referendum for allowing the city of Delafield to exceed the imposed property tax levy limit.
So for option number two, you would pass the resolution in your packet that's based on 7% and $312,862 over the past year's levy.
I'm, I'm moved to approve resolution number 2020.xx, as stated on page 158 of the packet, taking the question of a 7% of a 7% levy limit to the taxpayers.
7% increase.
Increase, correct.
Second. Okay. Discussion. All right, see?
I'll, I'll make the point of saying that I know we've got to include a lot of information in the ref, in the referendum question. I think, although not, I'm not sure how I'd change it, I think it's well-stated, and it's about as plain English as I think you can make it. There's no double negatives. There's no, there's no, it's very straightforward, I think.
This is really statutorily required language. You can't really change anything.
Oh, is it? Okay. Could you add in $18 per $250,000 in value?
So I'm told by the league attorneys that this is statutory, and you shouldn't change it. But with that being said, I did see one other municipality that included a statement at the end with it, so...
I just, I don't, if it's legally allowed, it just helps people wrap their head around it. What does this mean to me? And if I know I've got a quarter million dollar house, and it's cost me 18 bucks, I don't think I'm going to sweat it.
No, it's, it's 30, it's about 45. Just don't mistake that. It's $18 per $100,000.
Oh, per 100, 18 cents. Did I misunderstand it?
$18 per $100,000. So, $180 per million.
Yep.
Yeah, so you're correct. Thank you for correcting me.
Still come up with about, average house, $83.
So we need that language in a resolution passed tonight, if we were to include it?
Yes. Yeah, so the language, this has to be passed tonight. And if you want that to be considered in there, I would suggest that you add that in, if determined to be allowed by the city attorney.
$18 per $100,000 of valuation.
I think it should be stated as, I think it should be included, if we can, as a, as a, so in the example you saw, was that a final statement? I mean, was that a statement, as a summary statement after the...
No, it was part of the ballot question. It was like one more sentence at the end of this.
This equates to approximately $18 per $100,000 residential household.
Yeah, and if I remember right, the municipality that I'm thinking about, they determined what their average house value was, and stated it in the terms of X number of dollars per, whatever that average house number was, 300,000 or 350,000, or something like that.
The county does that with their budget. So they have a method that they calculate that value. It's going to be different for the county versus the city, but...
So for what it's worth, we, the city, have always used the number $400,000 in our budget documents as kind of a number we put out there, and then people can prorate from there. If they're 800,000, they double it.
Probably, probably pretty accurate.
Yeah.
I'm willing to skin the cat anyway. I just want it to be in plain English, as people don't understand what it's going to cost me.
I personally think the $100,000 houses, it's easier for people to relate to. They don't have to do any math. So I personally am in favor of the second resolution as well, with that statement, based on the $400,000 house.
And I would encourage you to consider adding, if allowed, by legal counsel.
Tim owns the motion until voted on, so he can make whatever additions he wants to his motion.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to say it concisely. Was the word approximate used? Do we need... Was the word approximate used? Do we need an exact value? You calculate the exact value and put it in?
No, we should use the word approximate.
And so what would it be for, uh?
Eighteen times four.
Oh, nineteen times four.
Eighteen times four.
Seventy-six?
Seventy-two dollars?
Seventy-two. All right. Well, amend my motion to include the, um, after the levy of four million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, um, which also result, would, would also result in a, in approximate tax increase of seventy-two dollars for a four hundred thousand dollar home. Property, I'll say property instead of home. Sorry. Does that make sense?
Yep.
If legal counsel allows.
If legal counsel allows that wording to be.
What'd you say about property versus home?
Pro, the word property instead of the word home.
Yeah, we should use property.
Yeah, property is a home, so. So which results in a twenty twenty levy of four million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and an approximate tax increase of seventy-two dollars per year on a four hundred thousand dollar property.
Tim, do, to avoid a long sentence, run-on sentence, I would suggest that we make that a separate sentence.
This would result in an approximate tax increase of seventy-two dollars per year for a four hundred thousand dollar property.
Yeah, so it was look how long that sentence is getting.
I love run-on sentences. You ever hear me talk? All right. Is that, do you have the language captured?
Mary, are you good?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Well, you're not going to have much time, right? Cause you've got two days to wrap it up and get it out.
No, we've got a week.
Okay, week.
So that's my amendment.
I second that.
Okay, does the second approve the, uh, amendment?
No, I was the one to second at Tim's motion and it does not require the second. The person who makes the main motion owns that motion again until the chair puts it to vote. So he can make the changes and amendments. Now it can be voted on.
Okay. Sounds like you agree. Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Passes. Okay. Good discussion, everyone. Okay, six aye. Discussion possible action as requested by Mayor Atwell regarding trick or treat in the city of Delphiel in twenty twenty. So the clerks get, uh, asked these questions earlier than you might think. So I wanted to get this on the agenda for us to decide if we wanted to have trick or treat this year or not, so we could give a clear, uh, and concise answer. Personally, I think vol, whether you're the property owner or whether you're the parent and the kid, it's voluntary to participate. Um, I'm for having trick or treat.
I would agree with the mayor and, um.
I'll ask him like.
Yeah. Something that, that individuals and families can make their own choice. If you're uncomfortable with, you know, fifty kids showing up at your door, put out a bucket of candy and turn off the lights, watch a good movie. Um, otherwise, you know, send your kids out as doctors and nurses this year.
It's a great idea.
What's the Saturday before? Do we need to decide the date?
Halloween is Sunday, isn't it?
October thirty-first is a Saturday.
October thirty-first is a Saturday?
Oh, awesome.
Double check my math on that.
That is correct.
Nothing to decide, right? The time.
That is correct.
And there's no Packer game on Saturday as of now.
So there's no Packer game.
They are talking about changing some NFL games to Saturdays if college doesn't play.
Could happen.
So what have our, what have our hours been?
Same hours as last year?
What do we have? What was it?
Four to seven.
Four to seven? We'll do same hours as last year.
Yeah, same hours as last year. Cause I always argue, since I've been on the council, that we make sure we have at least some in the dark.
Yeah, of course.
So I'll make a motion to approve, approve Halloween, to allow, allow Halloween? Uh, I'll make a motion to allow trick or treating from four to seven on Halloween.
I'll second.
Just, just to clarify, you stated four to seven. Other people said same hours as last year.
Same hours as last.
Same hours as last year.
I can't remember if it was five to eight last year or what it was, but we'll, we'll check and we'll do same hours.
Same hours as last year.
Okay.
Is there a second?
That was me.
That was you? Okay.
It's him.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay. Seven, reports of city officials. Administrator?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, seven B clerk, discussion and action on the voucher list, please.
I move to approve the voucher list.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Yep. Okay, and then I will refer, refer you to correspondence. And number nine, adjournment, uh, seeing no further business, we are adjourned at nine eleven P M.